Hey, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the January 17th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Judge Fink, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item B, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager.
Good morning. There are no changes to the agenda?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as posted and deliver, and allow the chair to deviate as necessary.
A second.
A motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item C is called to the public. I have one speaker slip. Mr. Tilford.
I think that's Judge Fink.
Oh, that's Judge Fink. My apologies. Judge, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, County Attorney's Office. I'm here this morning representing the Arizona Santa Cruz County Superior and Justice Court and the whole court system. I had requested, I just need to make a record of something, and I had requested that there be an agenda item about the court's process of transitioning to an independent personnel system, in part, not in whole, but in part, from Santa Cruz County. I had submitted this matter as an agenda item, and it was denied. I also want to note that I learned it was denied from one of my staff members, not from anybody from the county, but be that as it may, I wanted to discuss this agenda item, I wanted to discuss it as an agenda item, and I was told that it couldn't be an agenda item. All I was asking you to do was to allow me to present some information to you, engage in a discussion with you, answer any questions that you have, and have an open, transparent, public discussion with the three of you about where this issue is at this time. And all I was asking you to do is, in public, encourage and instruct your staff to engage in discussions in good faith and negotiations in good faith with the court system on this issue. We have an open-meeting law in Arizona, as you are very well aware, and that prohibits me from engaging in discussions collectively with the three of you as members of the Board of Supervisors, except in a public forum like this. And that's all I wanted to do. And, you know, these are important matters. It's important matters to the county, it's important to the court, to the employees, and I assume to some of the members of the public as well. I'm really disappointed that, and this is the second time this has happened, it happened once years ago, I'm very disappointed, as an elected official of an independent branch of government of this county, and as presiding judge, which means I'm an appointed representative of the Chief Justice of the State of Arizona for the Supreme Court for the State of Arizona, I'm his designated representative here, and I'm very disappointed that you have blocked me from having an open discussion with you, answering any questions that you have, and addressing you and discussing this matter collectively with you as required by the open-meeting law, and that we're not able to do that. And I don't understand why. No one's given me a reason that I think is an acceptable reason why your presiding judge, as an elected official, as a representative of the Chief Justice, can't appear before you in a meeting and have a discussion like this and answer any questions. And if it requires a vote of some kind, vote, vote yes or no. And it puts, it just, as we go through this process, and we're not going to stop this process, it's going to continue, as we go through this process, it makes it very, very difficult to try to work through it in a collaborative way with you, and ultimately it's going to be your decision about what happens, as far as the county's concerned, because I can't do that under the open-meeting law. And so, it's going to make it very difficult to engage in the process the way it should have been done. The whole agenda item, if you had allowed it to be presented, probably would have taken five minutes, not an extensive issue. It's just a presentation of what we're doing, where we're going, where we want to go, and just asking you to engage with us and for us to have some dialogue. But we've been blocked. It's obviously not a time issue. I've attended your meetings many times before, looking at your agenda, I'm confident, even if your agenda as stated or with our item, you all would have been out by lunch, it's not a time issue. So, this is the way I feel, and I think the law supports, that we should do this. We should have an open discussion, it ought to be transparent, we ought to be accountable to the people, and do it in public and in open. We've always all been respectful with each other, have a respectful discussion about it, and get this moving in a way that's productive, where we don't have a lot of people in the middle, because ultimately, at the end of the day, you're going to have to vote on this at some point, and I'm the one who's going to ask you to do it, and so we ought to be able to have this discussion about it. So, and really, in the event that we're not able, down the road, ultimately, after all this process is finished, if we're not able to agree, then this could, I hope not, it's not my hope, this could go to litigation, and it could be protracted and expensive, and that's not what I want to have happen. I'm trying to avoid that. But it doesn't make it any easier when I can't appear before you in an open meeting to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Fink. Is there anybody else in the room that'd like to?
Mr. Chairman, and Judge, before you leave.
And I'm sorry, it was rude of me just to do that. I have some court at 10:00. That's why I started to leave, but I have plenty of time, whatever you want to.
So, I'm going to point out a couple of things. Number one, you can meet with us individually, as long as you don't tell the other members what our discussion was, it doesn't violate the open-meeting law. For two, from what I understand, this agenda item that you wanted was an administrative order that you sent to our staff, and our staff sent it out to be reviewed by outside counsel. You're talking about transparency, I want to show you transparency. So, that's the reason it didn't come here, because outside counsel is looking at it, not because of anything else. You and I have met in my office before. I think you've met with Chairman Bracker, and I'm sure you've probably met with Supervisor Valera. And so, that doesn't preclude you from calling and saying, would you like to meet? We can talk anything you want to, but if you go and you do a daisy chain, then it becomes an issue. That's where the violation of the open-meeting law is. So, you know, it would have been nice, and we would have had the opportunity to say something before this, before you got up, but I just want to clarify that we're always available, at least I am, and I've always made myself available, to discuss these things, you know, whether you're representing the courts or not, but once that judicial or administrative order was issued, and you created a three-member person to do that, at that point, our staff did the right thing. They contacted legal, legal sent it out to outside counsel to make sure that it's done in proper form before we can put it on the agenda and have a discussion in the open, as you're suggesting. But I just wanted to clarify that point, so.
Fair enough.
There's no misunderstanding.
Fair enough. Now, let me add something to that. Number one, your outside counsel contacted me in October to talk about this, and I immediately responded, absolutely, I welcome the opportunity to talk to your lawyer, the lawyer, about this. That was in October. Never heard from him. Never heard from him. That was in October. Number two, in response to your appropriate suggestion that I talked to you individually, what's the problem with doing it collectively in the public? Why do it individually behind closed doors, quietly, where there's no transparency or there's no accountability? I could do that, but there's also, sir, I would suggest, respectfully suggest, that there's a benefit, and I'll stop, I know you want me to sit down.
No.
Now, you're getting signals from.
I just want, I just want to explain.
There's a benefit, there's a benefit to having an open discussion with three of you together, as opposed to individually, in the public, where the public can see, it's a more productive discussion if the three of you are able to engage together. It would have taken five minutes, and I just wanted to tell you the direction that we were going, wasn't going to ask you to vote on anything, and answer any questions you have, in open discussion. So, I could have gone to you individually, but you have these meetings, I assume, for a purpose, and that's to engage in an open discussion of these things in public, and I think that's the preferred way of doing it.
So, just.
So, that's, that was just in response to.
You misunderstood what I told you, is that nothing precludes you from meeting with us individually, not that we're going to decide behind closed doors, because we, as individual supervisors, have no authority to do anything. You can talk to us individually all you want, but at the end of the day, if it's not on the agenda, it's not here, we can't discuss it, and we can't vote on it. Number two is, I did not realize that our outside counsel had talked to you in October, that's the first, and thank you for letting me know, because now I know something else. But at the end of the day, Judge, it's not that we want to do things behind closed doors, and we never have, and we never will, because we want the public to be very aware of what it is that we're doing to protect the interest of the public, to work with our other departments, to work with the courts, and so we have to juggle a lot of balls up in the air, not just your department, but we have the Sheriff's Department, the county attorneys, every other elected official and department that we have to, so it's not that we're excluding you, but we just want to make sure, at the end of the day, that it meets the legal mustard so that we can, and that's all that I'm suggesting, not that we're going to do it behind closed door, and at some point, if they say, it's good to go, Judge, we'll have the discussion here, and if it takes five minutes or five hours, we'll be here to listen, and we'll hear, we'll give you the feedback. That's not the issue, but that's the only reason that it didn't appear on this agenda. And I just wanted to clarify for the record, you talk about transparency, I want you to understand that this is why it wasn't put on the agenda, so we can be transparent.
Thank you, appreciate it. I appreciate your comments, sir, thank you. And as I said, I usually stay for your meetings, but I do have a 10:00 juvenile calendar, I apologize, I have to leave.
Okay.
Thanks, Judge.
Have a good day, Judge.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that'd like to address the board? Dr. Verona.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisor Reese. Dr. Montella and I.
Bracker.
Bracker, I'm sorry.
We look alike, but.
Would like to participate in the discussion on item 15.
That's the ARPA.
So, that's going to, we're going to have a study session, and that's when you'll be able to participate.
At the study session.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing nobody coming up to the podium, we'll move on to current events.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I have a couple items to report. First and foremost, I want to send out my continued prayers to my uncle Octavio Molletta, who recently passed. He was a big role model for me, growing up, a wonderful person, so my continued prayers to him and his immediate family. I had the honor of attending Mayor George Maldonado's address and his inauguration a week ago, week and a half ago. I'm super proud of George, I grew up with George, and I look forward to working with George, as I said before. Last Friday, I had an LPC meeting, so things are starting to get rolling at the state, not a whole lot of.
LPC, what's LPC?
Legislation going on. LPC is the Legislative Policy Committee, where I represent Santa Cruz County, and we review all the current legislations, the bills going through, and we basically make decisions on whether to support or deny these, or go against these pieces of legislation that could be harmful to counties, and basically, in a nutshell, that's what LPC is. I also had the honor of attending the state of the state with Governor Katie Hobbs in Tucson. Look forward to working with our new governor. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on the opening of your restaurant, and the opportunity to.
Yeah, that's right.
Partake twice, and it's good, and the service is great, and it's good to see very familiar faces as waitstaff and also my old friends that we've been getting together there. A few things, number one is, my condolences to the Molletta family. I didn't know your uncle had passed away, Rudy, so please know that he will be in our thoughts and our prayers.
Thank you.
I also want to send out condolences to Esther Lopez Melendez, her mom passed away. She wasn't at the inauguration when George took office, which I was there along with my colleague. And also, Lena Fowler's sister died in a car accident last week, so our condolences to Supervisor Fowler and her family as well. As Supervisor Molletta said, I also attended the swearing-in inauguration of George Maldonado, and it was interesting to see all the mayors from Douglas, Sarawara, El Paso, New Mexico, the governor of Colorado. And so, as Supervisor Molletta has said, and Supervisor Bracker as well, we look forward to meeting and working together with the city. I did have the opportunity this last week to go to Mobile, Alabama, part of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation through NACO for Economic Leadership Mobility Network, and got the opportunity to tour a few of the areas as it relates to economic development. One was Airbus. Airbus is assembling a lot of the big jet planes there, they're trying to ramp up to do between eight and 10 planes a month. They'll probably be getting a contract with Lockheed Martin to do tankers. And we also got the opportunity to go to Africa Town. For those of you that are not aware, there is a documentary film on Netflix called The Descendants. It's very interesting, it was the last slave ship that came to the Americas after the law had been abolished, and how they burned the ship, sink it, so that there would be no evidence, because it was 110 people aboard, and they had always talked about it, and they finally found the ship, and it was just very interesting talking to some of the people that are part of, descendants of those 110 that were kidnapped, sold in Africa, brought over to the United States, and put into slavery. But one of the things that's very important that we need to look at is, in order to have a robust economic development plan, we need to have tools. And our people that we charge with doing, we need to give them the tools. They work together as a team, the universities, the community colleges, the University of South Alabama, Bishop State, work with the county, with the city, with the chamber, with the schools. The work, the W, is it IOA, the Workforce Investment of Arizona, they work together to try to find some of the things, or money. The chamber over there created a navigator position through a grant fund, which helps them navigate through funds, which we don't do here. It works with, they got an IDA grant to go and see how economic development is done in similar cities. They're looking to expand many things. The workforce program and the universities have really gone into helping create the jobs that are going to be needed. Airbus has created a very unique program for internships, and it's by application, and if you're chosen, you can go in there, you can earn money, but they will train you. So, those are some of the tools that we in this community need to take advantage of, and it's just amazing. I've got some contact numbers, so hopefully, in the future, we can reach out to them and get more information of what they do, and it's just, it was a very intense half-day flying in, then a whole day the next day, from eight, 9:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, and then the next day was from 8:00 till noon, so, and then fly back. So, I've got all the information there, and looking forward to. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak so long. I never do, but I did today, I guess.
I'll keep mine short, then, Supervisor Reese. To compensate for that, usually I'm the one that's talking a long time. I had an opportunity to participate in the Santa Cruz County River Cleanup. About 140 people showed up this Saturday at 8:00, at 7:30 in the morning, at the Ron Morris Park, to clean several bottle dams that had been created this last flood season. So, the work that they thought would take about four hours, we were done in about an hour and a half, so I want to congratulate that group for putting that on. And I would tell you the name of the group, but I forgot my phone at home, and that's where I keep all my notes. So, I just let you know that that happened, and Ray Sayer was one of the big organizers of it, so. Other than that, Madam Manager?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, on Thursday, ASU's playing UCLA for first place in the back, just in case you guys were interested.
ASU actually might have a good chance, because the other schools are going to play the Oregon schools, and so U of A was sick that weekend, and so the Oregon school was sick that weekend, so this is going to go through the Pac-12 teams, so.
Excuses, excuses.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Maricio and I attended our regular ARPA update. I also attended the swearing-in for our newly-elected officials and our appointed recorder. Jesus and I met with our consultants regarding our upcoming DC trip, in which we talked to the federal delegation, as well as the agencies, and tried to secure funding. We also held a department head meeting over the last two weeks, and then I also attended LPC at CSA, along with county managers and the ASAP monthly meetings. Jesus attended those as well, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Item E, department reports and activities. Item one, finance, cash, investment expenditures, and revenue report. Maricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $20,094,302, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $1,10857, with an investment amount of $7,093. The flood control district has an overall balance of $1,179,193, with an investment amount of $268,000. The jail district has an overall balance of $3,621,738, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $47,158,045, with an investment amount of $13,605,375, with an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $15,930,992.
Okay, are there any questions for Maricio?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're still doing better than we were last year at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is correct. Vice Chairman.
And even with the special funds or grants that we have to pay, so we're still doing our.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item F, action items. Number one, discussion possible action for authorization to fill a vacant deputy county manager position, B, two vacant deputy positions from the sheriff, and C, vacant deputy sheriff position from the sheriff.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to second, but under discussion, Mr. Chair. We're looking for a vacant deputy county manager position. I don't think we've gone through the process yet of selecting a county manager. I know Jesus is the current deputy, and, you know, I personally would like to see something official before we move on and look for a deputy county manager, in my opinion.
That's all I have. All right, I just didn't know if that was all. Are all these positions in the budget?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item two, discussion possible action to create and fill a public health aide position in Environmental Health Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item three, discussion possible action to approve the appointment of precinct committee persons from Santa Cruz County Democratic Party, Claudia P. Alejos, patroon number 22, and that's from Francis Glad from the Santa Cruz County Democratic Party.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four, discussion possible action to approve the JAVS Classic Coverage Extended Warranty Preventative Maintenance and Support Agreement from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, from Superior Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion possible action to approve scope of work for government relations consultant and authorization to fill, authorization to advertise.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item six, discussion possible action to approve the standard professional services contract for provision of indigent or mandated representation from the Superior Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item seven, discussion possible action to approve lease purchase agreement number 1000149293, with JP Morgan Chase Bank for computer hardware, IT security equipment, vehicles, and other equipment in the amount of $2 million, and allow the Administrative Service Director to sign any additional documents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item A, discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2023-01, declaration of official intent to reimburse the county for computer hardware, IT security equipment, vehicles, and other equipment in the amount not to exceed $2 million.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nine, discussion possible action to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Pierce Coleman for representation in connection with general election matters to increase the not-to-exceed amount to $100,000 a year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Is this related to the last, Kim or Jennifer?
This is related to the election matters that we're contracting with Pierce Coleman?
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 10, discussion possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrants A through F.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I missquote, I misspoke on this last one. It's the discussion for bonds for duplicate warrants for A through C. Do I need to do anything? We're good? Okay.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve. That's correct.
Second.
Thank you very much.
And then vote.
And a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 11, tax valuation adjustments, A through F. There's the F.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 12, monthly reports, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The monthly reports are in.
Good. Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 13, approval of minutes from January 3rd, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 14, demand. Item 14, Demands Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $934,909.19, $366,795.64, from the general fund.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We can pay our bills, and do a hear motion so we go into our study session.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene into the study session.
We are now in the study session. Item one, American.
We need to vote on.
Oh, a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. American Rescue Plan Act Update.
So who's going to do that, Jennifer? Oh, Maricio.
Maricio.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
The lights are brightly shining on you.
Thank you, Javier. I, we wanted to provide an update on the American Rescue Plan Act based on the allocation that the county received back a couple of years ago, and then the second trench last year. So we received a little bit over $9 million, and there before you is the breakdown on the percentages, and this is something that hasn't changed. This is something we went over also before. The percentages of the distribution shows you the road fund revenue loss, the general fund revenue loss, and the community projects which involve the small business loan and also the nonprofit program as well, and then the broadband project, and then the ARPA balance. Next, please, Javier. So the distribution there, you saw in the first slide was the percentage, now it's on the monetary side. And the reason why I wanted to bring this up with management and with the board was to go over the ARPA available balance, which right now sits at $1,731,000. We had previously identified when we, Jesus and I, based on an assessment, we identified certain projects that are potential projects that might go well with the balance that's pending there. So you see the main complex HVAC replacement, which is estimated at about $1 million. The main complex fire suppression, $100,000. The roof repair for the main complex, $450,000. Electrical upgrades for the main complex, estimated at about $250,000. The Assessor GIS flyover, $350,000. The court employee parking barrier, that's estimated at $150,000. And then a couple of requests, one from Tubac Fire at $116,000, and the Sonora Elgin Fire District at $141,000. All these funds must be obligated. We still have until December 31st of 2024. However, we just wanted some direction from the board to see what type of projects you want to fund with the available ARPA balance. Next, please. Based on that, management had went ahead and did an assessment and provided some options for the board to consider. Now, not, these options are not written stone, they're just availability of something so we can have direction. There's an action item. Once we go back to the, to the regular meeting, hopefully by that point you were able to provide us with some type of direction and how we can move forward with expenditure of the remaining balance. So if you see the first column, we have different, there's different options out there. We can contemplate certain items in the FY '24 budget, which is, that cycle's coming up soon, or we can entertain any of the four options that are out there, or interchange as you see fit. Option number one includes the HVAC, it includes the fire suppression, the roof repair, and then the court's employee parking barrier. That's listed at about 1.7 million, which leaves a little bit left over, about 31,000 left over there from the ARPA balance. Option two, again, includes the HVAC replacement, the roof repair, and the GIS flyover. That's a little bit over 1.8 million. Option number three includes the HVAC replacement, the fire suppression, the electrical upgrades, the court's parking barrier, and then their request by the Tubac Fire District and the Sonora Elgin Fire District. And then the last option includes pretty much everything that you see there except the main complex HVAC replacement.
Now we get to ask you all the fun questions?
That's correct. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Reese, Supervisor Malera.
We're going to hear from the public and then.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to address the board in this study session? Except for Dr. Verona?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, several months ago, Dr. Montero, on behalf of the Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz County.
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging, submitted a letter making a request for $30,000 as a part of the appropriation for that. And if you have any questions for us, we are here for that. We would like to be considered for the funding of that. The letter was submitted. I'm surprised that we weren't included as part of those options in there. But anyway, we would like to be given serious consideration for that. And we can tell you, which you all know about our program and everything, and Dr. Montero and myself are both been volunteers there for the last eight years. So I would like to answer any questions or concerns that you might have, and that you please give that serious consideration for the elderly of our community.
Dr. Verona?
Yes.
Did you go through the process and get denied when the applications for ARPA funds?
Through your process here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, let me tell you what happened there. I didn't apply, and I'll tell you why I didn't apply. You guys had a program here to invite people to come over here to explain the program. And I sat here for over an hour for the program, and it was very evident to me that there was already a decision made of who you wanted to give the money to. I felt very set aside. All the presenters that were there, from Mexico, one presenter, and all the other, a young man here, presenters, were basically alluding to one segment of the community, and that why they should apply and why they should be considered. And that being the arts, I mean, if you look at the funding that was recommended, you can see where basically the money went to. And I didn't feel, to tell you the truth, I didn't feel welcomed at that, at all. And I expressed my concern to the county manager immediately after that. I expressed my concern, and I expressed my concern to the supervisor that represents me also. So that's why I'm here. Not that I'm asking for a special permit, I did attend, and that's exactly how I felt.
Anything else?
So, let me ask this, and I don't know, how many other outstanding requests do we have for funds? Do you know, Maricio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would have to check again on the list based on what the number of applicants for nonprofits were submitted and were, for whatever reason, were not able to be funded. I would have to double check that list with Angie Donaldson.
Would it be too late for the senior center to apply with all the documentation that's necessary to get some type of allotment? I think it's important that we realize that we have a big elderly population in this community, and sometimes the only meals they get during the day is when they eat there at the senior center, or the volunteers take food to the elderly's home. And I've seen it in action, so I know that the need is there. So it's something to consider. I don't know if we would be breaking any rules or anything, but if there's a way to reconsider, I know we're going to have about $31,000 left, but we also need to look at everything so that in the name of transparency, we act fair with everyone.
I will double check that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I mean, we will move forward as, you know, wherever the board desires and whatever the direction the board provides us today. And if you, we can prepare a package and so they can go through the application process.
Mr. Chair, just.
Yes, sir.
Just to add to what Supervisor Reese mentioned, I personally agree with him that this program's amazing. It does a great job for our elderly community. And I'm just kind of disappointed that it fell through the track, through the cracks, you know, where we could have helped with the process. But I do agree, if we can still do it through Angie, I don't see, I personally don't see a problem with that.
If I may?
Yes.
Madam Manager.
So first of all, let me disclose that I sit on the board of the Council on Aging as the treasurer. It's an unpaid position. So I need to put that out in the open. So Supervisor Reese, I mean, we obviously can look at that, but there were nonprofits that met the deadlines that didn't get funded. And so if we open it up for one entity, you know, we're potentially creating a conflict for those entities that submitted the information in a timely manner. You know, there's ARPA funds available, that's the study session that we're under. If we wanted to take another round of nonprofits, you know, that would be an option. One of the items under your options would need to come off the, you know, the list. But when Maricio gets the information, because I don't remember either, we gave the nonprofits first, I just think that that could set a dangerous precedent if we're not going to open the nonprofits up again. And I apologize to my board members.
You're going to get reprimanded after this.
Again, it's an unpaid position, so.
That's okay, Jennifer, I'm going to be first. So Santa Cruz County did a pretty incredible thing with our ARPA funding. We made $1 million available to local businesses. We made half a million dollars available to nonprofits in our community. If you look across the state at counties of our size, there was one county that did it. If you look across the country at counties of our size, there were probably just a handful that did it. This was an incredible program that we put together for this community. And Dr. Verona, I'm sorry that you felt that you were excluded, but if I look, this board had nothing to do with the selection of the entities or the businesses that received this. This was all handled by the Santa Cruz, excuse me, by the business, the business loans were handled by Chicanos Procasas, and the nonprofit things were handled by the Southern Arizona Community Foundation. Why you chose not to do that, or why you felt disparaged in that thing, I wasn't at the meeting, I can't address those issues. I'm sorry you felt that way, but it was, but the spectrum of nonprofits across Santa Cruz County that received funding, it was a really broad spectrum. I'm really sorry that you felt the way you felt at that thing. Was it a complicated process? Extremely complicated process, because I went to the meetings with those nonprofits once they'd been allocated the money, and the work that they had to do, and the training that they had to do to get their paperwork in order, and their financial, and the business part of their 501(c)(3)'s in order to accept federal money, very, very high bar. They worked really, really hard for what turned out to be some money, but not an awful lot of money. So I want to, you know, I'm very proud of that program. I think that program was terrific for us. Not going to ask you what I wanted to ask you, because it has to do with the other governmental agency entity in this community and how much money they gave you. So it's really, how much money did the City of Nogales give you from their ARPA funding?
The question is, how much ARPA money did the City of Nogales appropriate to the Santa Cruz Council on Aging?
Yes.
Zero.
Thank you very much. So it's really challenging, because I know my two boardmates represent the City of Nogales, and I know that what you do at the Council on Aging is really important work. It's really good work. But we had a process for the nonprofits, and it's very hard for us, it's very hard for us to be put in a position where you're asking us for direct funding at this part of the process for this. But I respect you and the work that you and Dr. Montero do for that entity.
So.
Supervisor Reese.
It was interesting that people that I talked to that went to the city with this money, they said, you have to go to the county. The county's the one. Can you hear me? Test, test, test. So a lot of people came to me and said, I went to the city because my business is in the city, I wanted to apply. I said, you have to go to the county. The county's going to be giving out the money. And I still don't know what allocations are not, other than what I've read in the newspaper, what was given, or what was used, or what was not used, or went out. But, you know, I think when you look at everything that we've done, as we try to be fair, and I agree with Bruce, I mean, I'm, I know you told me about the process, and I know you talked to Jennifer about the process. And those are some of the things is that if it was general fund dollars, I guess maybe there's a little leeway, not much, we still have to comply with the law. But dealing with the federal government and their compliance, and I know that our staff has to be very careful, even though it was a direct allocation for once, we didn't have to pay it upfront and then submit for reimbursement. But, you know, I don't know if there's going to be any other opportunities coming down. I know when we go to visit our elected officials in DC, perhaps that could be one of the other things that say there's still needs, especially for, for, you know, finding resources to help feed the elderly, where maybe there can be a separate appropriation made just for those nonprofits that are helping feed not just the elderly, but children. So that could be one of our asks when we go back there. And because I think when I look at what's happening across the country with inflation, with everything, I mean, it's hard right now. Gasoline came down a little bit, now it's inched up a little bit again. When you look at the price of a dozen eggs now, I mean, it's an Estor restaurant. You know, because of the bird flu and how many birds that they had to put down to avoid any kind of massive pandemic on the lay-in hands. So I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things that have become much more crucial, especially with food and elderly that for the most part are all on a very short budget that whatever they get from Social Security or, and they have to decide, do I pay for my medicines or do I buy food? So what you do out there, it's God's work because it gives the seniors an opportunity to get together, at least, you know, have a friendship so they're not alone in their own homes. So that's my commitment to you, Dr. Verona. We'll go and we'll lobby or appeal to perhaps maybe a smaller round to assist organizations such as yours to continue to provide that service.
It might be. Thank you. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, Madam Manager, if we do in the future have other funding, maybe we can, which I think we might, we might have some, maybe look into funding this organization.
And it might be something that we can do in a smaller way in our budget because of the needs and what's going on with the economy and the effect it's having on the elderly. But those are the things that we can talk about in the future, but I think through this program, I think the ship has sailed. Is there any other discussion as part of this presentation? Any call to the public? Anybody online that would like to address the board? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our study session and reconvene regular meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 15, Discussion Possible Action to Direct Staff Regarding Projects to Fund for the Remaining ARPA Monies As Presented in the Study Session.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adopt option number one.
Mr. Chair, I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item H?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and we are adjourned.